We can't turn it on up here, but they sound to be, okay. Okay, so we have some housekeeping to do. The first thing we're going to do is discuss possible action regarding nominations for Chairman of Ordinance and Insurance Committee. So we'll just start out with any nominations.
Can we discuss two and three together? Since they're both regarding nominations. Ones for the chair, ones for the alternate?
I'm sure we can.
I have no objection.
Yeah. All right, let's do it that way. So we're looking for nominations for Chair of Ordinance and the alternate of Ordinance and Insurance Committee. Do they have any nominations?
Actually, could I make a motion that instead of doing individual nominations, we just make approve the recommendations of Mayor Doyle made during the May 16th City Council meeting?
We can do that.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, we'll call for a vote.
Um, Gantier?
Yes.
Shop Chair?
Yes.
Chetwood?
He's not here.
Trammell?
Yes.
Okay, so I will relieve my chair and I'll trade places with you.
I see no reason why we need to make that change now if you want to finish.
Oh, that's okay. I mean, we're here doing this, so we might as well make the change, make it happen.
We can get this out of our way here. There we go. All right.
I'm going to put the gavel over here away from Chris.
Okay. Item number four on the agenda discussed and possibly approved minutes of the March 8th, 2023 special meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And I will second that. Any discussion?
No.
Call for vote?
Gantier?
Yes.
Shop Chair?
Yes.
Trammell?
I'm staying.
All right, item number five, discussion and possible action regarding update and modification to ordinance one dash six dash two compensation. Salaries for elected police chief, mayor, clerk, and treasurer have been updated to reflect current payroll. This update removes mention of the mayor's position from cost of living increases. This does not remove any other position eligibility for cost of living adjustment increases. So, um, do we need to read that? I'm assuming everybody has had a chance to look at it. Mr. Mayor, if you would like to explain the idea behind that?
Real quick, going into this, um, as we look at this ordinance here, one dash six dash two compensation, basically, we were about six to eight years behind on what the compensation amounts actually are. And so what we've done is I went through using current payroll numbers. It's about the right verbiage, thank you. We updated the elected officials. There is no current pay raise taking place with this. This is what we were elected into based upon the positions that were being filled. So this does not affect anything really going forward, except for my position as the mayor. We've, I, uh, basically, what's taking place is that that cost of living increase loophole, if you will, uh, the mayor is no longer eligible for that cost of living increase. So what it is, is what it is until the council decides somewhere that they feel an increase is needed there. So that stays put. Other than that, no other verbiage was changed, just updated, and that's pretty much where we're at.
So I'm understanding correctly, there's basically two things going on here. Number one, we're bringing current, the facts to match what's actually going on.
Correct.
And the second thing is we're exempting the mayor from the cost of living increases.
Only the mayor.
Only the mayor. Okay.
We good?
Okay, anybody have any questions? Okay, call for vote?
I don't think we had a, had a motion. I'll make the motion.
No second. Call for vote.
Who said second?
Motion, not seconded.
Oh, okay. Shop Chair?
Yes.
Um, Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes. Okay, the next one, discussion and possible action regarding update and modification to ordinance one dash six dash five Personnel Board, redesigning the construct of the Personnel Board. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Would you like to address this, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I can. So based upon past scenarios and going forward and looking at how that Personnel Board is going to be kind of brought back to fruition, if you will, for a period of time, we did without. So we had our budget and Personnel Committees not to be confused with Personnel Board. So the Personnel Board is there in case an employee has a grievance or needs to appeal disciplinary action or something like that. And so what we wanted to do is we wanted to look at, um, using the experiences that this city has gone through in the last year, two, three, four, whatever you want to say, we needed to make sure we were doing this the right way, that gave equal representation to any employee, regardless of gender, a fair, a fair opportunity to be fairly represented. So what we've done is, um, we're going to create three members and one alternate. Those will not be council members, those will be appointed by myself, they will not be city employees, they will not have any real true interest in the direct interest in the business of the city. So bringing in neutral parties, there will be, as we go forward, there will be documentation that they have to sign, that they understand it's personal and confidential things regarding employment statuses that are, you know, applied to the laws that are there. But the idea is, is that we'll have a chair and two other members, and then that fourth person will be the secretary. Okay, that, so the, the construct of that is that we will have two females, two males involved in that. So should we have a scenario where hypothetically, a young female feels intimidated by a council that is all male, we don't want that. We want to make sure that she feels comfortable enough, she feels represented, same with the other side. If we had an all-female council, we'd want to make sure that there was representation. It's keeping it fair and making it so it's a non-biased situation. And so basically, we've gone through and just kind of constructed how that's going to be appointed. They'll, they will, uh, well, it says, "The Personnel Board," there in C, "shall not have duty or authority to act concerning the employees of Municipal Utility Department, which by charter are under the authority of the, of MUB. The duty and authority to act Personnel Board shall extend to all non-elected employees of the city." So we want to make it clear that MUB is its own entity and that they will handle their own disciplinary situations or their own, I say disciplinary, their own.
Personnel.
Personnel situations. So that's really, really short summary of what we've done there.
Also, the secretary does not have to be a member of the board?
The secretary is a non-voting member of the board, but they will also be appointed.
But they're the alternate?
Right.
So if somebody doesn't show they would in that, okay.
But in a, in a normal scenario, that is not a voting position. So they'll decide who that will be.
So they'll still be there, they'll still be aware of everything?
Yeah, and that, we, we made sure to word that very carefully in there.
Yeah, has everybody had an opportunity to read it? Anybody have any questions?
No.
Are we good?
An employee at the city of Pryor, no matter what their structure is within their department, is still a equal, they're just all employees, right? We have no department heads different, none of that's different. Everybody is an employee of the city of Pryor.
Everybody that we're talking about?
Everybody that's working for the city of Pryor.
Employee of the city, correct.
Okay.
That would be a W, too, not a ten ninety-nine.
Right, number word, yes.
Yeah.
So the idea is we want to make sure that if somebody comes up and has a grievance or something, we don't want to put a grievance in front of other employees, we want to put it in front of a neutral party so that they, they can, one, maintain the best interest of the city, but also maintain the best interest of that employee.
Sure.
So it's a, it's a non-biased. And so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Well, you had just stricken the word officer out of there, and so that was, that was the reason I, in that same duty.
I think that's referring to elected officials.
Right.
Yeah, elected officials are dealt with differently. There's a special section in the charter and everything else, how they're dealt with. So that's different. Okay, any other questions? Call for vote?
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Shop Chair?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, presentation by Brown and Brown regarding Citigroup Health Insurance Plans.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Jennifer, you are on speaker. Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Lisa?
I can hear you, yes.
Yes, okay. Jimmy, you might need to mute the computer side because it's reverb backing. There we go, that's better.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi, everybody, from down on the Texas border, somewhere near, I think, Texas, I'm not quite sure. Thank you for letting me visit with you virtually this evening. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. Jimmy Greason is there from my team. She's your dedicated customer service manager in our office there in Pryor. Of course, you guys know me, I guess, Jennifer Britton, I'm the lead consultant on the account. And we've been working with the city now since 2018, so have a little bit of history behind us, and the plans have been relatively stable. Think Mr. Shop Chair can attest to that. It's been a really positive trend as far as, nothing terribly significant as far as increases or changes to plan design, been able to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which the employees seem to really be enjoying for all of these years. If you will, just give me a minute, I'd like to just give you a real brief background on the status of the health plan now, and that will also help you understand the renewal numbers. So thankfully, we have a decreasing average age in the population. The city's been hiring younger employees, and just recently, there were a handful of those who are Medicare age who were able to move to Medicare plans, and so that's going to help the renewal next year. And I used that also this year to leverage the initial increase that Blue Cross tried to hand down, um, from nearly eleven percent down to about eight percent. So we got a few points off just by, you know, us kind of paying attention to what's going on with the population, our relationship with them, and their commitment to staying a partner with the city for the long term, and, you know, absorbing some of those losses as we go along from year to year, just knowing that in the end, if it's a long-term relationship, they will win. And they're making money, they're not losing money, I can guarantee you that. So we do have currently, for the last twelve months, a running loss ratio of a hundred and fourteen percent. So that means fourteen percent of the premium that was, or the claims that were paid out were not covered by premium essentially. So on paper, they do have a loss, but we understand insurance well enough to know that no company is in business to lose money, so there are other ways that they can make a profit. So we use all of that information again to leverage down that initial increase. There are four active high claimants on the plan, and just because of privacy, we don't really like to talk about what those conditions are, but that's a cost factor as well. So over this twelve months compared to the previous twelve months, there was a twenty-three percent increase in claims on medical and a seventy-nine percent increase on just pharmacy claims. Specialty pharmacy is all in the news these days and has been for several years. Thankfully, pharmaceutical companies are coming out with some biosimilars to those, so it's kind of like generics, if you think of it in that term, even though technically they aren't so generic. But the industry is looking for ways to curb those costs down. So for example, with the city, the twelve months prior to this year, the specialty medication spend was at fifty-eight thousand dollars, and in the last twelve months, it exceeded two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars. So you can see, this is something that not just the city, but every employer in the country is dealing with. And we know with the recent reporting Lisa had to help us with, with pharmacy costs, that is something that Congress is looking at, too, to help regulate and to reduce the cost for everyone, not just the employer, but also for the members and the consumers. So want to share some good news. Good news is eighty percent, eighty-seven percent, excuse me, of the population, they are using generic drugs when possible. So they're using the plan wisely, they're using the telemedicine benefit, and they're using urgent care. We aren't seeing an excessive use of things like the emergency room or other things that tend to drive costs up. We also, in case anyone should ever ask you, well, what's the value of our plan, or how good is our plan, how good are the benefits at the city? This is a recruit, recruiting and retention tool. A member on the plan, their average cost share for their claim is thirteen percent. So that means the plan essentially is paying eighty-seven percent of an employee or their family members' overall claim expense, and the member is just paying the thirteen percent remaining. So all in all, in our world, that is basically a platinum plan, that's the best you can buy. So the city is offering a very good benefit. I understand that's an overall part of your compensation package, and where maybe you can't pay more in an hourly rate or salary, these benefits make up for some of that, and they attract employees that, right now, have given the city the availability to have an average tenure of eleven years. So not many employers can say that anymore, the average tenure is more like two years, especially in the last couple of years with all the turnover after COVID. So the city's doing a lot of really good things, the stability with the plans and not, you know, making significant changes every year and changing from carrier to carrier has really helped. One other thing that we keep in mind, and this is important for maybe those of us in this room, if I were there with you, who are making decisions and thinking about what's important to employees, we look at the generational spread across the population, and half of the population was born before the year nineteen eighty. So we have fifteen percent of employees are in the baby boomer bracket, so that's born before nineteen sixty-four. Thirty-eight percent of employees are the Gen Xers like me, we're like the middle age, you know, becoming grandmas and having kids get out of college, and that's those born between sixty-five and eighty. And then the other half of the population, thirty-seven percent of those are millennials, born between eighty-one and ninety-six. And now we have this new generation coming on, which just amazes me that we're even here, but we have people working, born after nineteen ninety-seven, who are now working, and they make up ten percent of the city's population, and it's growing. So why is that important? That's important because we in this room, again, the decision makers, I'm guessing, are probably in that half of the age bracket. So what's important to us may not be important to the other half of the population at the city. So that's why sometimes I'll be bringing recommendations or having conversations with you about, um, you know, one of the things that a lot of people ask me about these days is pet insurance and financial wellness tools, you know, things that the younger generation maybe find valuable that you and I don't. And that's just something that, my job as your consultant, I try to bring to the table to help you understand all of your population and meet all of their needs whenever possible. One of the changes the city made a couple of years ago was moving to all electronic or online enrollment, and I think that's been really well received, Lisa may want to comment on that as too. But it helps with accuracy, it helps with the timeliness of data processing, and more importantly for Lisa, a lot of administrative functions are streamlined with that. It just speeds up the whole process, and I personally haven't heard any complaints. If individuals need help, they can always come over to our office and we can help them individually, and we can often do face-to-face meetings, so we can help them there as well. But overall, it's been, it's been a really good positive experience. So, um, just, that's just a little bit of background. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think, I don't know if I need to pause before the next item on the agenda actually talk about the health insurance renewal, or if I should just go on. Do you have any questions?
I, I have a question. I was here the last time we went through this. Has there been any substantial changes in, not the cost, but the, but the coverage? Is it all pretty well the same as it was last year?
Yes.
Okay.
So all of the renewals, all of our recommendations for the renewals are to keep everything exactly as they are.
Okay, thank you.
And I've got that detail, too, yes. Okay, well, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and then we'll talk specifically about the next item on the agenda, which is the health plan renewal itself. We did shop this out to the market at the United Healthcare, Community Care, Cigna, and the Oklahoma Municipal League self-funded plan. And with, with some of those numbers, negotiating with Blue Cross Blue Shield, like I said originally, the renewal was a ten-point-eight percent increase. We have that down now to eight-point-three, so if it rounds it down, it's eight percent, which in essence is an eighty-three thousand dollar total annual spend increase on premium. That eighty-three thousand dollars is not all city money, because some of that is paid by employees, but that's just the gross year-over-year annual budget expectation. And that's for eighty-two covered employees and many, many dependents. None of the benefits would be changing at all. All the co-pay deductibles and everything stay the same. And that, if you have a packet, that's on page one of your packet. We did, I'll just briefly tell you while you look at that, on page two, we did bring a fully insured HRA option that would help offset some of that cost, but the underlying medical plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield would have a deductible of five thousand dollars versus the current five hundred to a thousand dollar option. Basically, it would be like a secondary insurance, employees would have to carry two cards, make sure things are filed by physicians twice, you know, do some preliminary discussions with the HR team and, you know, some of the core kind of group there at the office. It didn't, it didn't fall well on those ears, you know, just like perception-wise from employees and disruption as far as understanding two plans and why do I now have a five thousand dollar deductible? That wasn't, nobody was really very excited about that one. Community care did come in at seven-point-eight percent increase compared to what now, like I said, is eight-point-three from Blue Cross Blue Shield, but the benefit is not near as good because the out-of-pocket maximum, which is the worst-case scenario claim spend for a member, um, on the better of the plan, is twenty-five hundred dollars, and it's only one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars right now with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So most insurance companies can't compete with the benefit that Blue Cross even offers right now with that five hundred dollar deductible and worst-case scenario claim spend for a member at one thousand two fifty. So that means, you know, no matter how horrible my cancer treatment expenses are or how long my ICU stay is, in a calendar year, me as your member, if I were on your plan, if I'm on that Blue Advantage five hundred dollar deductible, I'll never spend more for my claim than one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in a year's time. The average employer's deductible is three thousand dollars, twice that. So really, this is the primo benefit plan that you can offer to employees.
Is that per family or per individual in a family?
That's per, per individual, but a family is maxed at three individuals hitting that number. So if I have a family of five, when three individuals hit twelve fifty each, then the rest of the family has zero out-of-pocket.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Page five of your packet has the OML plan. Every year we look at this, it always sounds like a great deal to be self-funded. I'm a huge fan of self-funding. Typically, there is a lot of savings, and, and we could get into the details of that on another day when we have a competitive quote, but they came in at twenty-two percent and thirteen percent higher depending on the plan design. And again, they're not even touching the richness of the benefits that you have right now with Blue Cross. So all in all, we're recommending the eight percent increase with Blue Cross, that is on par with trends, so medical inflation-type cost, that's where most employers are landing, somewhere between seven and nine percent with all other, you know, components equal. So knowing that the city had a hundred and fourteen percent loss ratio this year, I think that's a really good renewal.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the, I guess this is the health portion that we've just covered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
We're good.
All right. Do we want to wait to the end and then go through and vote on these, or do we want to handle them one at a time? I mean, I think we can probably do it either way. Okay, yeah, go ahead. I, I agree. Well, everybody okay with that? Okay. Go, go ahead with the dental portion and continue on.
Okay. These will be really easy because none of the other benefits are changing in price or benefits. So if you flip on back in your proposal there to page, I don't know what's there, um, the bottom, it should be page, I think my numbers are mismatched a little bit, it should say dental at the top, maybe page four. I have an old copy.
Our dental is page six. Is that what you wanted?
Page six, okay. I'm going to see Jimmy is there if you need her help to guide you. The current plans with Delta Dental, they're the insurance company for dental that everybody loves and, and wants. No change in benefits, no change in rates, basically just, it would renew as is with no disruption at all, no increase in cost. And the next page will be your vision plan with VSP. Again, it's the largest carrier, and it is the one that, from my experience, even talking to my own eye doctor, eye doctors love it, members love it. It initially had an increase on the rate, but we were able to negotiate that down to a zero. So again, those rates will stay exactly the same, benefits will stay exactly the same. Nice, nice benefits all around. And then Mutual of Omaha has the package of the employer-paid life, which is a fifteen thousand dollar benefit. Then they have voluntary life, which employees can purchase and have payroll deducted for themselves, their spouses, and their children. And then also with Mutual of Omaha, we have short-term disability and long-term disability, those two benefits as well, the disability are options employees can buy, they pay one hundred percent of the cost. Mutual of Omaha has come out again with no rate increase and another two-year lock on these rates. So next year, they will be guaranteed to be the same as well. There's no adjustment, adjustment regardless of claims or participation changes. It's a little bit challenging on the life and disability side. We did send this out to nine other companies just to check the market and make sure Mutual was still competitive. The challenge is the, the percentage of police officers versus the percentage of other non-police employees, and obviously, it's just the inherent risk of, of their jobs. If you want to have any questions about the benefits, the details of them, I'm happy to go over them, but basically, the short, long-term disability, they pay sixty percent of the employees weekly, or, yeah, I'm sorry, sixty percent of their gross income, whether that's weekly or monthly, depending on the benefit. When the short-term disability ends, if they have long-term disability, they actually back up to each other, so it's a seamless benefit. So essentially, if you have both short and long term, if you are disabled, you're only without a paycheck or without the benefit for the first fifteen days on the short-term disability, which they can use their PTO and those types of benefits for. And then if they continue to be disabled, they can actually stay on this benefit until they turn sixty-five. So it's a, it's a really nice benefit. So the only change is the medical plan, everything else would renew just as is, no price changes and no benefit changes.
Any questions? Okay, no questions.
Okay, that's everything that's currently offered now. What we have, the rest of the packet would be recommendations for a change on the COBRA administrator and then possibly adding two more voluntary benefits. So the current COBRA administrator called Wage Works, their renewal, they're wanting a hundred and fifty dollar annual fee to set up for open enrollment, and then a minimum monthly charge of a hundred dollars. It's seventy-eight cents per employee, but the minimum is a hundred, and that's an increase from what the city's paying now, which is seventy-three dollars and eighteen cents per month. So currently, the flexible spending account or the FSA benefit is administered by a plan, a company. So currently, the flexible spending account or the FSA benefit is administered by a plan, a company out of Tulsa called FlexPlan. FlexPlan can also administer the Cobra and they will do it for a one-time setup fee of 150, not an annual fee. And then their monthly administration cost is just a flat $80. So if the city grows in size and the next year it won't affect the cost, it's just a flat 80. So there's a little bit of saving, you know, really honestly, it's not so much even about saving $20 a month maybe necessarily, even though I think every penny counts. It's also ease of administration, dealing with one vendor versus two, simplifying, simplifying all of that. Having a local company also to work with has a lot of value as far as dealing with employees. I know, for example, we just had an employee text me yesterday and it's been 60 days and she hasn't received her Cobra notice. And so we were on the phone, Jimmy Wes and I with WageWorks trying to get a copy of it and they're just a little, they're just a little too large and a little too out of touch. Whereas I feel like FlexPlan, I can call the owner of the company, say I need this now and as long as he's free at that moment, he's got it over to us within a few minutes. So just, you know, a little bit of savings, ease of administration, simplifying all that, one bill pay, it'd just be a little easier for the city. Then the other two things we looked at, we had talked about MASA. This is Medical Transport Solutions or Emergency Transport via air ambulance or ground ambulance. This is a membership, so it's not an insurance, not insured product. It is something that you could allow employees to purchase if they wanted to, no cost to the city. For me, the value of this is twofold and this is one reason I started talking to it, talking about it with employers locally last summer is, first of all, what we know in our industry is that a lot of the ambulance services are not contracted with insurance companies, so they're essentially out of network. That means that ambulance service, whether it's air or ground, can charge me, the patient, any amount they want to. My insurance company is going to base their payment off of what they allow under contract. It's a lot of technical language to say that there's a huge gap between what insurance allows and what the company can bill me for my, especially air ambulance ride. We see those up in the $30,000 range and the insurance company may only pay a couple of thousand of that. Me as the patient, I get stuck with the balance. So this membership essentially fills the gap and covers that overage for you if you have it. It is agnostic as far as company. So some air ambulance especially will have a membership, but you have to use their air ambulance. Well, Mayes County, we have two or three different air ambulances that will come pick us up and you don't get to pick. Whoever shows up is your car accident or it's your heart attack scene. So first of all, that's what I see as a consultant, that's what I see the need for on the member side. What side is that? Just being involved in our community and knowing it's a small community, we have just messed up. I also know that when I'm helping a patient with that bill with their air ambulance or their ambulance ride, I'm doing my best to get that provider to write off what I, what my patient can't, what my member, my customer, what they can't pay. Some saying, they don't have the money to pay that extra $12,000. You need to write this off or they're just going to not pay anything. Let's make a deal, let's negotiate something much lower. So in, in essence, the provider gets to, gets less revenue. So I'm thinking in my mind, if we have a benefit that employees can purchase to protect themselves from that large bill, but also as a community, if we, more of us have this type of membership, that will help mess up because when we have an ambulance ride, we can't afford to pay it, we have a solution that will and Mesa doesn't have to write off those as losses. So a little bit of a community service little plug there from, from me. But it's something that is, you know, I don't know, maybe 15, 20% of our employers offer it. It's not very popular and again, maybe only 10% of your employees would even purchase it, but there's no cost to the city, it's just financial security if your employees wanted to purchase it. Very simple to enroll in, they just do it through our online enrollment system. It's bolted in there just like all the other benefits. And then the last thing is Norton Identity Theft Protection and online security. Just with the increasing threats of cybersecurity, you know, we all now are looking for VPNs and ways to lock down our personal information. Norton is an affordable way to do that, again, through payroll deduction, it would be no cost to the city. Basically, as an individual, the cost would be $899 for the basic, all the way up to the best full family is $2998 per month. Just an affordable benefit. And again, I only really recommend or even mention benefits that I think there's actual value in or that I hear employees saying they find value in. And a few years ago, I decided to buy a similar product through Brown and Brown as an employee. And within about 12 months, we had a personal breach, Houston and I, of our banking account information and some other things. Somebody says a fake bank account in our name and we used this. And ever since then, I'm like, okay, now I have to tell all my employers about it because it was actually really helpful. They gave us advice on things we wouldn't have known to do to clean up our credit and to protect our credit, to get all those things shut down. One example I tell people all the time, I didn't know you can call AT&amp;T and have them do a virus scan on your cell phone since we're on there so much doing a lot of our business. It's just little things like that. They gave us step-by-step process and help on the phone with a live person of how to stop what was going on and then mitigate any future damage by locking our stuff down a little bit better. So this is real high level. I know I tend to talk a lot, but I am here as long as you guys need me to answer any questions about any of the things we've talked about already.
One question on the, on the Mesa ambulance service. The $14 per month, again, is that per individual or per family?
That's per family.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know in Louisiana, where I'm from, there's an Acadian ambulance that they do that. And it's a similar thing where, where it's a, it's a prepay or membership and it's, it's saved a lot of people a lot of money. I mean, it really has. Any specific questions on any of these items that we have covered? All right, let's, let's go up to number eight. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Nope, sounds good, 8%, 8.3% increase, but that's, that's what's going to happen, so.
Call for vote?
Um, Gantier?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Number nine, discuss and possibly recommend council action regarding renewal of city dental insurance. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
Same price, same benefit, so it's a pretty good deal.
I think so too. Any discussion? Call for vote?
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes. Number 10, discuss and possibly recommend council action regarding renewal of vision insurance. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Again, it's the same price and the same coverage, so that's a good deal.
Yep. Call for vote?
Trammell?
Yep, yes.
Gantier?
Yep. Shropshire? See, it'll fill us out. Number 11, discuss possibly recommend council action regarding renewal, renewal of city group life and optional voluntary life, short-term disability and long-term disability insurance. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Okay, no discussion, call for vote?
Gantier?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Number 12, discuss possibly recommend council action regarding using FlexPlan Administrators, Inc. for Cobra Administration. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. And I think the only change was that we're going to use somebody that we're already using to cover that instead of somebody else for cost and, and, and you're comfortable.
We're actually, we use FlexPlan Administrators for FSA, for flexible spending plan. So we're changing from WageWorks Cobra Administrators to FlexPlans.
And that's something you're comfortable with?
Yes, because they're really great on our FSA plan already and like she said, local, a lot better.
Okay, I was going to ask you if you were cool with that.
And our current one, minimum $100, we've never even got close to $100, so that's a huge increase.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions for anybody? Okay, call for vote?
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes. Number 13, discuss possibly recommend council action regarding voluntary option with MASA Medical Transport Solutions, do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll say it.
Motion, Shropshire, second, Trammell. Discussion.
Sounds like a good deal.
Okay, no discussion, call for vote?
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Number 14, discuss and possibly recommend council action regarding voluntary option with Norton LifeLock Benefit Solution, do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
All right, motion and second, is there any discussion?
The one thing I didn't find out was what page the, the actual price of your, of your LifeLock was on.
Life, uh, Norton.
Or Norton, I mean, excuse, well, Norton LifeLock, yeah. Oh, so they didn't give you any?
Oh. Did you find it?
Okay, I was just wondering where that was at. See how expensive that was.
And we're looking at the top section that says voluntary benefit pricing. That would be what the employee pays.
There we go, thank you. And it is, all right, so.
So yours has numbers.
All right, numbers, uh, employee only, $6.49, is that correct?
I don't have it memorized, I'm sorry.
Well, why don't you read it out so that, that we can understand it better, so we'll have it in its proper context, please? So the individual and the family and how that works?
Uh, looks like employee only $8.99 and employee family $17.98.
Okay. All right, and it's up to a million dollars, is that what I read? Up to a million dollars protection as far as what, what they'll put towards working to fix the problems? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so there's no more questions, call for vote?
Oh, Gantier?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Number 15 on the agenda, schedule next meeting. Do we have anything that we know is, I'm aiming? Do you know of anything that we need to address again, related to any of this?
No, at this point.
All right, so we're just wait and schedule the meeting when we have something to meet about. Number 16, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Second. Motion and second, hopefully no discussion, call for vote?
And Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate you all very much. Bye, Lisa. Thank you, Jimmy.
Yeah, last year, we went through this thing.